I call this meeting of the Cassbury Independent School District Board of Education to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. And as a reminder, we are here for what is best to promote and engage and encourage achievement for every student in our district. And we will have an invocation led by Ms. Mary Lou Martinez. We will move on to item number three, communications from citizens. We appreciate you being here this evening, and we always welcome communication from citizens of our district. Individuals who wish to participate during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment shall sign up with the presiding officer or designated no later than 1:00 p.m. the day of the board meeting and shall indicate the agenda item or topic on which they wish to address the board. Ms. Branch, do we have anyone who wishes to speak to the board tonight?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Item four, Ms. Smith Faulkner, were there any questions called in regarding the consent agenda?
No, there were not, Mr. Board President.
Okay. Can we move on to item five A, the tax attorney report?
Yes, Mr. Board President, Elena Fernandez, represented from Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins &amp; Mott LLP, will provide an annual update of the collection of delinquent property taxes.
Good evening, President, Superintendent, Board of Education, and members of the community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. As our superintendent stated, my name is Elena Fernandez, and I'm here alongside my colleague, Elizabeth Vanda Calvo, and we are your legal counsel with regards to the delinquent property tax collection. And I am about to provide you a little report on this. I want to go first acknowledge and thank this board and administration for your continued commitment to fiscal responsibility and educational excellence. The work we do in partnership with the district is always guided by the belief that every dollar recovered or allocated effectively contributes to stronger student outcomes and a more sustainable future. With that, let me walk you through our collections report. The first page that you all see is something that we give to you all every month. This is our June activity. It tells you how many pleadings that we filed, showing the amount of the taxes, penalties, and interests, the judgments. We've been grateful to not have any tax sales, what we have in bankruptcy, and that our phone bank, our call center, and how many calls that they've been making on that dollar amount. We monitor the progress of partial payment agreements through various taxpayer contacts about their compliance. And I just want to let you know, for the 2023 tax year, which just finished its full cycle through June 30th, 2025, our collection percentage is 84.84%, which represents our first 12 months of collecting on that tax year. The 2023 adjusted delinquent tax levy as of July 1 of 2024 was, or is currently, $619,878.49. The balance due as of June 30th, 2025 is now $93,973.27. The 2024 delinquent tax turnover, which we just received on July 1 of 2025, is $468,031.18. The 2024 tax collection year is from July 1 of 2025 through June 30 of 2026. We will update you monthly on the collections over the next 12 months. And our future activity will include filings of new suits, amended cases, and again, letting you know where our phone calls are in our phone bank. Our goal is not to push things necessarily to litigation, but get them collected in our call center. And so the next page you see is just the 2023 tax year at a glance, which I just showed you, which just shows you where we were each month of our collections, and as I stated, what's still remaining that we've got. Remaining is what's in red, and then each month showing what we were able to collect. The next page is account breakdown chart, which kind of gives you an idea of what we have in bankruptcy, what we have in trust, in deferral, in litigation, in partial pay, in uncollectibles, in bad address, and action pending. I know when we hear the word uncollectible, the first question we ask is, what does that mean? And so what we look at when we think about uncollectible is we look at what the whole role entails. And first and foremost, if you're not familiar with statute of limitations, when it comes to our business personal property, our manufactured homes, they have to stay on the roll for a total of 10 years. And when it comes to real property, that statute of limitation is 20 years. Well, when you've got a business that might be, and I'm talking specifically business personal property, who might be there on January 1 of this year, but don't make it the full year, don't even make it until next year or two years down the road, that account becomes uncollectible, and we've done our efforts, but the reality is, it's not going to be removed from the roll until 2010. If we did initiate litigation on an account for several years, and we take a judgment on it, and the business is no longer there, that now time, that date, the tax office won't purge it, they'll go from the judgment date and all of those things. And so most of the time when I look at uncollectible, we try to break up our accounts where we have, what is real property? What do we have in our manufactured homes that we're going to deem uncollectible? What is our business personal property? What do our mineral accounts look like? And as we do our collection efforts, we try to narrow, to really ice down what is truly collectible in our terms. So we kind of have this umbrella where we say, this is our uncollectible property, in terms of we've exhausted our efforts. And the reality is, until we hit that statute of limitations, it's going to remain there. And every year, we've been working diligently with the tax office as things come up, letting them know, hey, make sure this gets purged, this is in litigation, and so forth. So our goal, again, is not to just throw things in litigation to get them tied up, because that'll toll the time on when we're able to go and get things removed. And just to let you know, mobile home accounts subject to the 10-year purge, we're looking at $62,536 right there. And then when we think about our business personal property that's subject to the 10-year purge, we're looking at about $15,000. There's also an account, it is tied in litigation, but it's, oh God, it's a BPP account, can't think of the name right now, but it has $125,000 on it from a judgment we took in 2013 that should be ready to purge, but we've got to make sure that we remove that litigation code. And when we remove it from our end, the county and all the other entities have to do as well. So that is what we look at when we say uncollectible. Bad address is just, we send out our mailing, we just started our mailing campaign, the first letter that goes out is a notice of tax lien, with the second one, which we'll give in September, which will be notice of foreclosure. And we'll start our process with the 2024 year. But while we focus mainly on the current year, the current year is the easiest to collect because it's the first year, but the older the account gets, the harder it is to collect. But we are calling on all years. And that last page of the report is kind of what I briefly told you, is what we're looking at, what just got turned over to us on July 1. We're still combing through, marking what's in CAD litigation, what is CAD litigation, what is bankruptcy, and so forth, to really narrow down where we want our callers to focus on. And that's all I've got for you. Any questions? So, well, there's a lot going on in Tarrant County. And so one thing, and first and foremost, when we say litigation, we've initiated the process. Normally, once we initiate litigation, someone gets served, then you get the phone call, I want to set up the payment agreement. And so while we don't want to be at the, we tell them, we'll set up the payment agreement, we're not at the, the court might push us forward, but we don't necessarily set the case for that. Some of our cases include estates and all the things, or you think you found one, and you find out there's five or six errors, and they're all over the place. So usually, the delay with getting things to close, it's the number of parties that are included in a suit, payment agreements, as well as our court docket. So we have about 13 courts that we circulate cases through Tarrant County. Some of those courts have hearings every month, some only have them once a quarter. And when they have them once a quarter, you've got to give 75-day notice that you are ready beforehand and all the things. So that is essentially what I would say kind of delays the process a little bit.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You all have a wonderful evening and enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Now on to item 5B, 2024-2025 HB3 college career and military readiness summative review.
Yes, Mr. Board President, at this time, you'll have Dr. Darla Barnes, our CHS academic dean, Stephanie Martinez, our director of CTE, and Manny Salvador, said that wrong, college career readiness advisor, will present a summative review of the House Bill III goals for 24-25 college and career military readiness. Just a reminder, these goals are five years, they were adopted in 2020 by the school board. We progress monitor them in the district improvement plan quarterly and annually, and in the CIP for the high school and reach annually and quarterly, and in progress monitoring with the campuses quarterly. And so they have our preliminary results for the year.
Good evening, Board President Tolliver, Superintendent Smith Faulkner, and board members. Tonight, we'll be presenting our summative progress towards our House Bill III CCMR goals. This is a preliminary information as we await our final A through F accountability rating and our taper report. Additionally, the 2025 school year concludes the five-year plan adopted by the board in 2020. I'll hand it over to, oh wait, we got one more. I got my first slide. First, we'll take a look at our overall CCMR goal. We've had tremendous success moving the needle. Our preliminary results show that we had approximately 99% of our 2025 seniors meet CCMR. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Salvador to explain the different ways that kids can receive their CCMR credit.
Hello, good evening. So there are multiple ways for students to meet CCMR. The first is by college readiness. This includes scoring a three-year higher on an AP or four on an IB exam, scoring above the college readiness standards on the SAT, ACT, or TSI II in both English and math, or earn college prep course, complete a dual credit course, earn an associate's degree, or complete a dual enrollment course and qualify for at least three on-ramp hours of credit. The next way to obtain CCMR is through military readiness, which includes enlisting in the United States Armed Forces or Texas National Guard. The last way to obtain CCMR is through career readiness, and this includes obtaining an industry-based certification, as well as completing the course required for the pathway, being a student with an IEP and demonstrating workforce readiness, graduating under an advanced diploma plan identified as special education, and lastly, earning a Level 1 or a Level 2 certificate.
As Mr. Salvador mentioned, there are multiple ways to obtain CCMR. CCMR Progress Measure 1 looks at the percentage of college-ready annual graduates. The goal was to increase from 28% to 89%. The preliminary percentage for 2025 is 90%. Some of the benefits of such a high percentage of college readiness include that 77% of students had a college application submitted. 86 students participated in the TCC Connect, and 64% of our students completed their FAFSA. In Progress Measure 2, the goal focused on career or military-ready graduates, with the goal to increase from 38% to 50%. Significant growth was made between 2020 and 2022. However, this is a goal that we did not adjust upon the sunsetting of a major IBC. This is the dip you see in 2023. While we had the dip in the air of '23 data, due to the sunsetting of what the heavily utilized MOSIIBC, we've begun to make headway as we've implemented new IBCs such as Microsoft 365 and Stuken Social Media Marketing Certificate. We will continue to reevaluate our IBC offerings as the new IBC list is currently being updated for this year. For the next five years, we will reset this goal. As we look at Progress Measure 3, just a reminder, the goal you initially adopted is no longer reported in taper, so a new goal was adopted that measures student eligibility for outcome bonuses. The goal was to increase student eligible for outcome bonuses from 12% to 37%. Outcome bonuses are the additional funds a district can obtain based on eligible students passing TSI II and obtaining an IBC or attending college after graduation. While you are not seeing significant growth in the chart, there are multiple steps being implemented to support outcome bonuses, including the TSI II testing starting in eighth grade. Outcome bonus awards are delayed for two years, but based on 2025 graduates, we anticipate a $65,000 award in 2027. Now to Stephanie Martinez to discuss the 25-26 action steps.
Thank you. With our first official year of our Cassbury Collegiate Academy, which is our early college high school, we've already begun to see some earlier impact on our CCMR success with our ninth and 10th grade cohorts. So as we get more entrenched into this program, it'll be good to see the impact that it has quicker in the game rather than waiting till the junior or senior year. Two, now that we've kind of fully actualized our long-term five-year plan, it's time to start constructing new House Bill III goals for the next five years. And we're in the process of crafting goals that are more in alignment with our A through F accountability, and they'll be recommended for approval by the board in the new DIP coming up. And three, this is good to do this because it allows for more monthly monitoring. We already do that in our progress monitoring, but it'll be something that we'll put a scorecard up for the board to see. And then four, success has not been, it's been elusive with our outcome bonuses. So one of the things about that is, it's the kids' inability to meet the mark on the TSI II criterion scores. And TLI is making effort to ensure that the curriculum is updated and includes specific lessons and activities in the tested area. And like Dr. Burns explained earlier, we're already starting to move testing down to eighth grade, Algebra I and honors, to start pushing that needle and getting them ready for the TSI II and SAT standards. And then lastly, five, as the workforce evolves, we have to evolve as well. The Texas Education Agency updates approved industry-based certifications, IBC list every four years to reflect the shifting industry standards and the workforce priorities. So in response, we have to continually evaluate and adapt our CTE program offerings to stay in alignment with both state requirements and labor requirements in our area. With the construction of our new CTE building, we are proactively aligning our pathways to better serve students and the community. Just for example, we're shifting from a traditional culinary arts program to a hospitality management program that positions our students for a wider range of high-wage, high-demand careers identified in our regional data. So there are jobs right here that are high-wage, high-demand that they could be leaving and being and entering the workforce with. These changes are not just reactive, they're strategic. Our goal is to ensure that our students graduate with relevant skills, certifications, and opportunities that match the real-world needs of our region, so that when they leave Cassbury High School, they're prepared for any post-secondary endeavor that they want to do. Thank you.
Stephanie, would you also add that we also look at if they're aligned with the industry-based certifications accepted in A through F accountability?
Correct, yes. And they-
And that limits sometimes.
Does limit, and with them changing it every four years, we have to really stay up on that. Correct. Military enlistment, but the outcome bonuses are only based on if they've passed TSI II and that they have the IBC or enroll. I believe that if they do enroll in the military, I believe that they also, we all get outcome bonus for that, too. We've already begun the phase-out program for that, so we have our last-year practicum students as well. They can enlist. We get what's called a D9 form, and after they've done their enlistment, then that's how the state will track it. And that's once they've actually signed the paperwork for that.
And our CCMR data is lagging data-
Correct.
-when it comes to A through F, and I think that's what you're saying, like, we're actually a year behind.
Right, two years behind on bonuses as well.
So, yes, and two years. And so what you're seeing today is going to impact the accountability two years from now.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. And then so, Mr. Salvador, I didn't trip over your name this time. You also, I want you to brag on, because of all of the CCMR strategies we put in place, how much scholarship money did we have this year? The largest I've had in history-
So the previous year, we were at 4.1 million, this year, we're at 8.67 million. So we doubled.
On the military, okay, I know that this happened with one graduate that we had, like, I want to say he graduated two years ago. Graduates, he's not sure what he wants to do, but then a year later, he does join the military. Is that something that they should report to the school, or what is the timeline for post-graduation?
So we have up until that August of the next school year to report. So if they don't, if they sign after that deadline, we can no longer report them.
I did have a request that people online, be sure you have your mic on because they're not hearing our voices.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we'll move on to item 5C, 2024 Cassbury High School Bond Program Construction Update.
Yes, Mr. Board President, Cameron Holloman, Bond Program Manager, will present a construction update on the 24 Cassbury High School Bond Program.
Thank you, board members. Board President, Superintendent Smith Faulkner. Okay, let's jump into this. Well, our strategic plan is to be on time, in budget, and a state-of-the-art facility. Along with that, I've brought the lowest mean temperatures in the last decade, so you're welcome for that. With that also comes rain, so we've had some challenges, but we'll jump into just kind of the timeline here. As you can see when you've gone by, we are erecting steel. That's about 2% of what we've done since last June, but however, it looks great, and it looks like it's doubled in the past month. So we're happy about that. We've got the crane in place. We got that done before the rain. Slab-on-grade, we're about done there, so that's allowed us to start the steel. We were able to switch to permanent power over the holiday, July 4 holiday, so just in time for the high school to come back. Our underground stormwater is complete, but we're not able to quite make the connection until we work out some details with the utilities. And that would be nice to alleviate some of the water that we've had. Band hall renovation is about 60% complete, so we plan to take over from BTC October 1. So we'll be coming to you with some furniture requests in order to get in there by November 1. Ideally, for those seniors to be able, while they're still competing this fall, to have use of that. And then the parking lot on the west side, we've got the portables removed, yay, so we'll have that earthwork site all prepped up by the end of next week. And then the media center redesign and bidding process is underway, so we're looking at roughly a month. That started last week, so that's really cool, and we'll have some renderings for you next month. And then progress-wise, infrastructure, we have our permanent power and our stormwater drainage. Again, what I wanted to point out here is that we're on schedule with these things, and, you know, it's not just due to me, that's due to Mr. Jacob here and Lenny, they've been so key, there's so many intricate items that go along with design and getting these things in, so I can't praise them enough for that. But our water line has been a little bit lagging because we're dealing with two governmental entities, engineers and contractors and architects, all in one room trying to agree. So that's very difficult. But as you can see, as far as our timeline, not much of these have been adjusted since I created this a few months ago. Renovation-wise, you'll see some pictures on the band hall, media center and cafe, as I said, we'll show you some renderings next month. And then our theater and choir is going right along with the media center, and that will start in the spring. So we plan to have that ready for the beginning of the school year next year. New construction-wise, pair and beams are complete, so we're happy. Foundation and steel is ongoing, we plan to have that completed in September. And then the parking lot on the west side will be huge. Upon completing that, we'll be able to move that, the job trailer over there, there will also be able to stage trucks. So I don't know if any of you noticed, but just to jump out ahead of it, we're having to stage trucks on days like this in front of the high school because of the traffic, because of the mud, because of the steel. So being able to utilize that parking lot is also going to help in the coordination process. So this is just an overview, but overview, but I want to show you here that we have paid out roughly 27% to 29% on the renovations and the soft cost, or package two and soft cost. The key there is that we're probably about, I think Lenny and I both agree, at least 33% to 36% complete. So what that means for us is that we're staying about 5% to 10% ahead of schedule relative to what we're paying out. So what that means for the district financially is that we're able to carry, you know, roughly $3 to $4 million each month and drawing interest on that. So that's a plus. So far, BTC hasn't complained much. I do think we're making the payments on time. We've just, we've been beneficial to have Israel and BTC's guys on site. They're really staying ahead of the game and avoiding some of the disaster that we've had with these rains. We'll jump into some photos now. Here's the band hall renovation, so you can see, we've got a lot of the infrastructure done as far as the ductwork above ceiling. Again, I want to give some praise to Jacob because technology side, it's tough when it comes to construction. I know Ms. Smith Faulkner can attest to this. So construction guys don't see technology as a trade. Technology is probably the most important thing that we have in the buildings nowadays, and that's progressed over the last two decades. But it's super important, so a lot of the behind-the-scenes things that goes on as far as coordination, getting the contractors out there, he's taking on a lot of this for the district in order to save some percentages in getting that work done in-house, so I really appreciate that. But we're really moving forward here, and again, schedule there is October 1 to hand over to the district. And here's the infamous red steel. This is the funnest part of the project, really. Once it gets closed in, you're just going to see a box there for about six months until we get it complete. But right now, we're moving forward with the steel. We've got areas to stage and areas to erect, so we're doing really well there. This, I just wanted to give you guys a close-up. This is the storm shelter, and kind of relative to this doorway down at the bottom, that's a, you know, nine-foot door, so we've got about 30 feet of wall- So, we've got about 30 feet of wall there, and that is all poured solid concrete. So, that'll be our storm shelter, which also is going to act as the gym, of course. So, just wanted to give you guys a close-up of the work that goes into that, not just all the red steel, but the prep that goes behind it. Here is the perimeter fencing. This is along the west side. Lenny, again, has done a great job of coordinating this. In the background, you see the two portables, and as of today, they're down, almost all removed. So, we've had some back and forth getting, getting rid of those. It's actually pretty difficult these days to get rid of portables because of the expense of hauling them and the permitting that the counties require in order to put them on the highway. So, Lenny's done a great job there. So, this is where the parking lot will be going in, so great headway there. And here, I want to show a one-minute video. I'll try to direct it a little bit. There you go. Thank you, Angela. So, here's our A, A, B, and C. If you're, that's the connector, that's the gym, and that's where A and the administration will be. This is where the storm drain has gone in along this perimeter. Try to get into the mic. And again, this west side, I've referenced quite a bit, this entirety will be a parking lot, and it will connect to Melbourne. So, that'll be huge when we're able to access the job site on that northwest side. So, really cool, we get one of these once a month, I think Abby's already posted this, so we're doing a good job of, on the PR side as well, and hopefully each month, you'll be able to actually see how much headway we've been able to make here. That connector is going to be really, really awesome. And again, all of those things are planned to move in, starting next spring, summer, and ending in the fall of next year. However, we do plan on being completely dried in sometime January, February, so that's when the inside work and a lot of the tedious stuff will be getting done, and we'll keep you updated on those inside. And then last, but and certainly least, too, is our challenges. So, stormwater, as you see, we, as I've mentioned, we've completed it. We've got a little bit, we're trying to work through to connect that. So, what that does mean for us is that we're able to move forward with our service yard, which is that area where the dumpsters are and where some of our custodians park in the mornings, at the competition gym, and it's also an access point. So, it's huge headway there, but we have faced challenges now for about six months. And then the City of Fort Worth water line, the big things to mention to you guys is that the plan has been taken to the city council last month. They're off this month, they take their vacation, so we won't go back until October. What we have to work out there is where our design and our engineers are completing the boring under the road in order to alleviate having to block off traffic and do overlay on top of the road. There's some things that we're able to do in order to alleviate both schedule and cost, but I do want to reiterate to you guys that in that meeting, we have agreed in principle on the design, and secondly, and more importantly, I believe, is they have agreed that the reimbursement, full reimbursement is still in place. So, all good things, so we'll keep you posted on everything. Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Could you add something while she's turning her microphone? Could you, our package one, I know you're bringing people next, but were we in budget when we closed?
Yes, we were. I was going to let BTC share the news, but hey, I'm here, so, yes. So, we did save about 10%, so we've got about $150,000, give or take, $1,000 that we're able to put back into the bond, of course, and that's the way it has to be spent. But BTC will come August 18th to share that good news with you guys, so act surprised when you see him.
That was one part of my question. And on the portables, do we auction those off? Do we sell those?
It's been a challenge, and I'm sure Lenny could talk for 30 minutes on that. So, we did post them, we advertised it, there's just not a lot of people wanting, so mostly it's a business now. People are buying and selling them, not necessarily, the people who we, who did reach out to us, some in the district, some River Oaks people, it's so costly to have them moved and the responsibility, it was too much for them to take on. So, it used to be a $10,000 flat fee, you get them and move them, and it's worth it, right? Because these were 2,800 square feet buildings. But, yes, we did, in fact, I would think we posted it for an extra two weeks, and we came down to one buyer, they agreed, and they weren't able to move them because of the lengths that they were going to have to go to and build platforms and things, not to get too tedious. But either way, we got our money, so they did pay us for the process and ended up demolishing them for us. So, yeah, so we did good, and I think we're even able to salvage the units on the, two of the HVAC units, which happened to be like-for-like compatible with another area in the district that we've needed to replace the HVAC. So, it's really a win-win-win, and so, yeah, he's done a great job on that.
And the other thing was, would you remind me real quickly on slide number three, the media center redesign? Tell me about the redesign again.
Yes, so we're going to be, we are renovating the current library into a media center slash cafe, along with the three classroom bedrooms. Okay.
So, in my mind, I was thinking we're redesigning the redesign, but we're not doing that. Okay.
Well, it's staying as a media center purpose, that's why I said redesign, yes. Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Moving on to item 5D, presentation of proposed budget amendments reflecting the 89th Regular Legislative Session.
Yes, Mr. Board President, William Wooton. Our Chief Financial Officer will present the proposed budget amendments reflecting the 89th Regular Legislative Session, and then Catherine Walker will also show the impact it has on the approved compensation plan, which you'll be reapproving later tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Education Superintendent. Today's presentation covers the financial impacts of House Bill 2, and obviously, this is our first budget adjustment for the 25, 26-year. Today's discussion points, we're going to ask you to approve the projected statutory required increases in teacher retention allotment, staff support retention, safety and security, and T R S allotment. And secondly, we're going to ask you to approve the 2% compensation increases for all other staff, and obviously, step increases for teachers with less than three years of experience. So, bottom line is that where does this money come from? This funding comes from the new funding generated on House Bill 2. And I'm going to go over the chart real quick. So, these are some of the allowances, there are various allowances, but these are the major drivers that was discussed in House Bill 2. The prior year, this wasn't a discussion. The 89th session, this is where they discuss how much to give each district. And so, as you see, for teacher retention allotment, we anticipate about 1.4 million. Staff support retention, 132,000. Special education evaluations, it's going to be 136,000. And basic cost, and what that really is, is they're giving additional money for the basic programs as well. Safety and security, we anticipate receiving about $307,000, and T R S on behalf is about $200,000. So, when we true those numbers up, we're anticipating receiving about $2.6 million. Now, here's the deal, the Mo Casey, which is our district financial consultant, estimates that the district will receive about $2.5 to $3 million in new, in new money. And so, next slide. So, as, as we, can you blow it up a little bit, click that in large? So, the, the conversation that, that we had earlier is that if the estimate right now is 2.5 to 3 million, we've actually believed that, based on the numbers we have now, based on our ability, that we're going to receive about 3.2 million. Now, are we over budget? Absolutely. But this is how we can make, this is how we're going to make it up. I've talked to CFO of Houston, Mo Casey, and Equity Center. And so, basically, what we've all decided is that we, we can make up the difference with vacancies, we can make up the difference with interest earned. For example, we earned about $250,000 this year. I only budgeted 100, just to be conservative. And then the indirect cost for my grants. And as I was talking to the CFO of Houston this morning, he said, "Well, William, you guys closed a $4.7 million deficit. Surely, you can close $500,000 with, you know, as you go out through the year." And this is us being intentional. And so, that's the conversation there. So, scroll to the bottom, please, with this. This is the amendment. As we see, budget amendment reflects budgetary priorities set forth by House Bill 2. House Bill 2 projections mandate is for the following: the teacher retention allotment, support staff retention allotment, T R S allotment, compensation, net statutory requirement. This budget amendment also includes a 2% increase for all other employees, which is the net of the statutory requirement in teachers with less than three years. And then, this budgetary amendment includes T R S on behalf for a 2% compensation increase. Next slide. Wait, wait, go back one second. I have a disclaimer. I have to read this disclaimer. Blow it up again. This is so important. All data reflects our best understanding of current revenue projections based on the guidance of TEA and Mo Casey. Following the release of July 25 certified values, these projections may change. The district will continue to update revenue estimates as the information becomes available. So, to the best of our ability, this is what we know today. This is what every district knows today. And so, we know better, we're going to come back with new information. At this time, Catherine, you want to talk about equity adjustments?
So, we're continuing to make adjustments as we try to better understand the impact that House Bill 2 is having on us. So, when we, when we were reviewing the changes for our teacher salary increases of that $4,000 and $8,000 bump that they're getting when they have three years or five years or more experience, and we also looked at when we raised our 2% midpoint adjustments, we realized that we needed to make some equity adjustments in addition. For example, when we looked at assistant principals, we noted that their daily pay rate was less than the daily rate of a teacher with those, with those increases, and so we increased their daily rate to match. And as we continue to review the impact of House Bill 2, we may need to make some similar future adjustments. But these are the positions that we've looked at so far that we're going to be making some equity adjustments to, the assistant principals, our campus academic leaders, and our instructional coaches, which includes our AIM, our mentor coaches, our innovation coaches, and then our math and reading coaches as well.
So, Board, thank you for, for your time and attention, and the last point is that we're going to make a recommendation to approve budget amendment number one as presented. Any, any questions, Mr. President, from the board? That's all we have for this presentation.
5E, Finance Monthly Update as of June 2025?
Yes, Mr. Board President, Mr. William Wooton, our Chief Financial Officer, will now also provide a snapshot of the unaudited year-end 24, 25 revenue collections and expenditures by fund and function as of the month ending June 30th of 2025. He's very happy about this report. This report offers a point-in-time view of district finances, ensuring transparency and revenue generation and our expenditure alignment with our budget projections.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, Board of Education and Superintendent. As the Superintendent said, this is probably my favorite report because it's, as of June 30th, the best information we have. Next slide. Today's discussion points, Budget Snapshot, Financial Performance, and Next Steps and Action Plans. All right, next slide. This is probably one of the quintessential slides. Bottom line here is that we actually budgeted 45.9, we're projected to spend 44.2, which, bottom line is that net change in fund balance went up $779,000. And I want to remind you that we had a $4.7 million deficit prior year. So, this year, we anticipate landing a positive, which I'm very excited about that. Next slide. So, when we look at the breakdown of funding sources, as I said before, we've collected 96% of our adopted budget, and we did that through indirect costs, controlling expenses, really just figured out a way to generate more income for the district and in various ways. And so, I'm very excited about that. When we look at local avalon taxes, we collect 104% of what was budgeted. State funds, we collect 96% of $34.7 million budget, and then federal sources, we collect 26%. And so, remember, it was like $15,000. Christie was always finding money for us, and we appreciate that. And then, obviously, indirect costs, which help increase the actual funds that we receive for, for the federal sources. Next slide. This is a really good slide. Year-over-year comparison expenses, the current year, basically, the bottom line is that we spent $43.5 million. The prior year, actual spend's $49.4. Now, these are audited numbers, and so, the, the net change there from this, this current year to the previous year, we spent $5.9 million less.
So, William, I just need you to clarify that. So, even though we had a 4.7 deficit, we actually were on track to, we had to cut nearly $6 million to get to a balanced budget.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I'm going to show a slide, I think it's pretty interesting, later. Instruction, special instruction, we spent less, we spent about $3.6 million less, instruction and support, we spent about $551,000 less, and general admin, $176,000. And then, in district operations, which is significant, we spent about $1.5 million less than we did in the 23, 24-year. Next slide. And this is a month-over-month spend. What I want to focus here is the spending gap, right? And so, it's kind of hard to see, but if you look in July, we spent $1.9 million in '24, '25, and then in '23, '24, we spent about $3.18 million. And the reason why we spent less in July, in August, is because the salaries that we accrue in July and August are moved back to, to June, because, and, and the accounting standard is that you are only charged, we, we can only expense funds in the year which we receive the services. And so, we receive the services. Obviously, when we look at 3.18, I'm not sure what happened there, but it should be a lot lower because we're not paying teachers in July, we're not paying teachers in August. And so, that number should be always about 1.5 to 1.9, depending on what the compensation looks like. And as you move forward to, to September, we kind of connect a little bit. The blue line stays pretty steady all the way through. The red line is, is, is cyclical, but when we look at February, you see the, the greatest gap. You know, we're, we're tracking about 3.5. Typically, our payroll is about 3.2. 3.5 is really, is when we pay the additional accounts payable. We, we also pay people, and we pay vendors, and so, that came out to about 3.52. So, that blue line is steady, and then the red line jumps up to 4.74. Not sure what happened there, but you can see that gap significantly. And then, when you look at May, you, you can tell that the, that we, the blue line stayed on track, '23, '24, '25, it stayed on track, and then the actual '23, '24 line dips down in May. And we know that we moved about, we were at a deficit of $4.7 million. And so, this is all general fund, so what happens when you have a debt there, we absolutely move money off of general fund to another fund. And so, in August, when, when the auditor happens and he comes back, he comes back in, in June, and moves all that money back that should have been expended in the year which the services were received and in the right fund. So, the focus of this graph is to focus on the spending gap, and so, our spending gap issue is pretty good. Next slide. For another interesting slide, it's the year-over-year change in fund balance. For another interesting slide, it's the year-over-year change in fund balance. In '21, '22, we increased the fund balance 3.2 million. And then '22, '23, we dipped down to 3.67. And in '23, '24, we dipped down even farther, 4.78. So when you saw that line go down like that, that was a result of the dip. And so we believe that in '24, '25, and '25 and '26, our change in fund balance, the floor for us is $500,000. We want to stay, increase this fund balance at least at $500,000 each year or more. You know, right now, we're tracking to increase at $779,000. So we went from a 4.78 deficit to a swing of $779,000, which I think is incredible. Next slide. So what's the next steps for us as it relates to the '24, '25 year? It's not over. It's not over until you receive the audit from the external auditor. July 2025, tomorrow, our external auditors continue the fieldwork. So they've been in the fieldwork for the last month or so, requesting information, requesting data. And we're going to continue to recover child nutrition indirect cost funds, working with, on that as we speak. And we're going to continue year-end general ledger accounts payable and payroll closeout. So we're still closing out the actual previous year. And so at some point, we're going to close out the previous year. We're working in the current year, and we're going to be planning for the future year. So October 2025, which is really a big thing there, is we're going to have an onsite visit from the auditor. And then November 2025 is when the auditor comes and gives us the final report. As to, it's going to be an unmodified report minute she passed the audit. That's my hope. All right, next slide. Mr. President, any questions? That's all I have. No problem. Thank you. You're reading correctly. Got you. I will look it up, and I can get the information to you. There's a lot of stuff in there, but I want to be exact where I'm talking. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yeah. I mean-
I mean, we will, I mean, we are having cuts in order to do this, but in general, we can say that our classrooms are going to be ready. We can follow up in a Friday update.
Absolutely. Yeah. Oh, thank you, ma'am. Mr. President. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you.
Adam 6, 2025-2026 Grading Guidelines?
Yes, Mr. Board President. At this time, Dr. June Richland, our Executive Director of Educational Leadership, has submitted the draft of the CISD grading guidelines for the '25-26 school year, and will be explaining some of our next steps.
Good evening, Board President, Ms. Smith Faulkner, and School Board members. Thank you so much for the opportunity this evening to speak with you about our grading guidelines. When reviewing the '25-26 draft grading guidelines, you will notice there are very few changes. I would like to point out changes on page 10. Ms. Branch, if you wouldn't mind to scroll to page 10. Here, you'll notice we have modified our language to add clarity regarding accommodations for special populations. This is the only major change in our grading guidelines at this time. If you move through the grading guidelines document, you'll notice a couple of other very small changes where we have adjusted the dates to 2025-2026. While there are very few proposed changes now to the '25-26 grading guidelines, there will be some recommended changes at the next board meeting. Ms. Smith Faulkner has tasked me with overseeing the revision of our kindergarten through second grade standards-based report cards to make them more user-friendly for our families, for our parents to, and so for our families and for our parents to understand. These report cards will align to the new literacy resolution and structured literacy block adopted at the May 5, 2025 School Board Meeting. Our committee will revise the K through second standards-based report cards to reflect a structured literacy block, which was developed in alignment to Scarborough's Reading Rope with guidance from the Texas, from the TXRL leadership team, using AMIRA. Student performance will be measured in the areas of phonological awareness, decoding, word reading, vocabulary, comprehension, fluency, and overall reading mastery. Not only will parents receive a revised standards-based report card with these updated standards, they will receive a monthly parent-friendly report from AMIRA describing their child's performance on their monthly assessments and exactly what they can do to help their child. Angela's got a copy of the report here. Also, I provided you with a hard copy of the report. Ms. Branch, if you will go back to that first page for just a moment, you'll notice a graphic here that provides the parent with the child's reading mastery score. And then on the second page, you'll notice the students' sub-scores. Ms. Smith Faulkner and Ms. Putney are working with AMIRA, TXRL, and TEA to add word recognition, comprehension, and fluency to the parent report to ensure a tight connection between the teacher reports and the parent reports. In addition, AMIRA and the standards-based report card were used as, will be used as the measure for teacher incentive allotment, further increasing the focus on implementing a strong structured literacy block. Ms. Smith Faulkner has already begun this process.
So to add to Dr. Richland, Ms. Becky Putney and myself met over the break with TXRL, who is working directly with TEA and AMIRA on our behalf to kind of set new standards for how to measure student progress and growth and performance so that we can track our student goals. We are working on creating a teacher report that computes the student performance and growth measure together, which usually we just look at our growth. So AMIRA would not only then in the future be aligned with the structured literacy block that we've worked on for the last year with TXRL, but it would also be utilized for establishing the overall TEA teacher designation thresholds. So we're using one, kind of one-stop shopping with our testing. And then that, then we're going to include K through 2 in TEA as an addition for the teachers so that they can be designated teachers. And now, with the new designations, they could earn up to $36,000 more in the new designation structure. And so we want to be sure we're tying student performance to our structured literacy block and for it to track our teacher performance. And our, we're basically on the forefront of developing the reports as we work with TXRL. We're not only doing this for us, but we're kind of doing a pilot approach to what this could look like for others going forward. And so we're very excited that we have the three partners who really like the direction that we're going and tying it into TEA. So we'll be reporting back a little more, and that's what Dr. Richland is tasked with now switching over our standards-based report card. So parents, we go beyond grades now. It's not an A, B, C, but instead, what particular ways are we measuring students' reading performance? And as a parent, how can I help as a parent? It gives me helpful tips. And they would be, as Dr. Richland said, monthly. So what that looks like is what Dr. Richland's working with her committee.
Thank you, Ms. Smith Faulkner. Of course, the standards-based report card will continue to provide updates on progress in writing, in mathematics, social studies, science, social skills as well. We will come back to you in one month, or I'm sorry, not one month, at the next board meeting, that's right, at the next board meeting, to provide you with the proposed changes to the standards-based report card.
For adoption?
Yes, for approval. Yes, that's correct.
Which will be aligned with the structured literacy also in three, but we're going to continue to use star scores-
Yes.
-for three.
For third grade.
As a measurement.
Yes.
Our House Bill 3 recommendations.
Yes, correct.
I think this goes even beyond letting our parents know if they're on grade level or not. And then it's bringing the parents in, and so the parents aren't engaged. And so I love all of the pieces about this, and that it's going beyond just, are they on grade level? Because what, you know, what does that mean? It's so much more than just a number, so.
It is. Yes, yes, you're welcome.
We want to add to that because the exciting thing is that our, on October 27, we have a built-in day for student-led conferences.
Yes.
So this is where their goal-setting will take place with, we'll be working with our teachers at the beginning of the year. Our campuses have already engaged at the ALT retreat, so that they are creating a student-led conference document in which our students will do the talking with their parents at the student-led conferences based on how we will train our teachers and train our students on how to read the reports. So it's the basis for the student-led conferences.
And just one more question. You said that this is a pilot program for other people for success?
Well, we are kind of setting the standard-
With TXRL.
With TXRL and AMIRA and TEA. Because, you know, we are part of some pilots-
Yes.
-based on the teacher retention allotment at TEA. And we are, we had an idea to tie growth with performance, which goes a little beyond what TEA does now. We had some conversations, and they really liked our approach. And so they are looking at how they can help us calculate that information and tie it Well, we, our TEA will be based on the AMIRA for third, fourth, and fifth grade also.
Okay.
And but the standards-based, right now, K through 2.
Yes.
And then we will look at the success of it. But our parents in third grade will still be getting the monthly-
Yes.
-reports in addition to their regular report card.
Thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Item 6B, 2025-2026 Capital Improvement Projects. Mr. Lasher?
Yes. At this time, Mr. Lenny Lasher, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Facilities and Operations, has provided information regarding the capital improvement projects scheduled to be completed and funds expended through the '25-26 school year. The information includes cost projections for HVAC replacement and roofing improvements throughout the district for the next 10 years. This has been a long, lengthy process on top of roofs and re-looking at inventory for HVAC. And so the funding source for this would be the capital improvements budget, where we're setting aside, you set aside in the budget process, $150,000 for HVAC and $50,000 for roofing. And Mr. Lasher has the overall plan he'd like to share.
Good evening, School Board President, Mr. Tolliver, Superintendent, Ms. Smith Faulkner, Board of Education. My theme tonight is replacement plans, starting with the 10-year HVAC replacement plan. So the document that you have in Board Book is a detailed inventory of all of our HVAC units in the district. So roughly, we have about 455 rooftop units. We have four chillers, and we have quite a few mini splits, which is the units in our electrical rooms, IDF, MDF closets as well. So what we've done is, this has been a team effort with our auxiliary services staff, with our new HVAC technician that we recently hired, and we have physically gone to every unit in the district and got our eyes on every unit. With that being said, we have graded every unit from a 1 through 5 in terms of what we've put into that unit from our work orders as far as expenses, along with labor hours and things of that nature. So with that being said, we have put a plan together for the next 10 years based on those budgets. However, just like anything else, there could be some things that move around based on if it's working well now and we have a breakdown, or we foresee some things going on as well. But what we're doing to maintain our equipment is we're doing quarterly preventative maintenance on our HVAC, which would include filter changes, washing out the coils, checking the belts, making sure the motor and those parts are in work in order to try to extend the life of that unit as long as we possibly can. Some of the challenges that we face is the refrigerant type that we have in some of our older units. However, we do have a supply of those as well. The other thing that we're seeing is, just like everything else, the inflation cost, the tariffs, they're making the units heavier. So now what that means is, if that unit is going in the same spot, it may require a structural engineer with its stamped design. So there's a lot of factors that are going into where and how we're making these adjustments accordingly. So with that being said, is we want to be financially responsible in terms of tracking those systems, how much we're putting into those units, is it cost-effective to keep that units on a unit-by-unit basis? So with that being said, we've kind of laid everything out for the next 10 years, similar to what we've done with our replacement plan that I'll be talking about later. But then that gives us a roadmap or at least a pathway to go down in terms of what we have in the budget and how we're going to affect those as well. Right. That's how I could fit it all on one page. Yeah. So, yes, so what we found out with that is the intake of flow of the air coming in versus where those units are. We will not have to replace them. We're going to be adding a few ducts to it and actually making some adjustments to that so that way we can, we can keep that. Now, keep in mind, obviously, on those very, very hot days, as much traffic as that goes through the doors, we do lose some of that as well, but that is something that we've taken into account and have a plan for as well. Right. 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 The other thing I will say on this 10-year HVAC plan, not only does it help us plan in the future, but also it's an inventory. So if we were to suffer a catastrophic loss in terms of insurance or anything of that, we do have everything listed. And going back to the tornado of 2000, that helped us tremendously when we had the inventory of everything that, it just makes the transition for the insurance company a lot easier as well. Correct. Yep.
So, Mr. Lasher, I just want to ask this. I know that you all went out on top of the roofs and actually re-inventoried it, and you did that before we made the plan. What did you find when you actually went yourself and inventoried?
We found, so what we do is, we put the year and the date that those filters are being changed, so that way we can track them. What we have found in the past, that some units haven't, the units haven't either been maintained through the preventative maintenance, and/or filters haven't been changed for over two years or so. So going back to your point is, just think of your home air conditioner, like, if you don't maintain it, it's going to work harder, it's going to put more stress on that, and your lifespan of that's going to be considerably lower as well. So that, we found that very common, and that's, that's now where we've actually have developed a quarterly checklist, we've involved other people and cross-trained them as well, so we can be more efficient with that as well. That's not.
Now, let's move on to 6E, the replacement plan.
Yes. Do you want me to talk about the roofing?
Yes, yes, go ahead and talk about the roofing.
So that's, that's, so, obviously, as Ms. Smith Faulkner said, our two points of emphasis for our capital improvement plans is our HVAC and our roofs throughout the district. So what we did is, we engaged our roofing consultant, which is LBK, and they're out at Fort Worth here. So back in May and early June, what they did is, they went to all of our campuses at night, and there's an infrared system that they can actually go through the different layers of roof. So most of your flat roofs, you can only put three, three layers on, and then you have to tear it off and replace. So that's industry, and the weight of it causes more overall weight on the structure, so then an engineer won't, won't sign off on that as well. So with that being said, we were able to get, visually getting your eyes on it as well, because you may look at a portion of the roof, and one part may look good, and one part may not, but this is actually the technology that is standard-based now, so it gives us an idea of what truly the shape of all of our roofs are. So then what we do at every campus is, we develop sections within that, that campus, depending on where the joint line is, the expansion joints, and things of that nature. And then we were able to develop a criteria with all of those sections of what was able to be considered restoring, which would be very simple, of going in and making a patchwork on that specific quadrant, or part of those quadrants, or we could go back and do a retrofit, which would just be tear off that one section of the quadrant, or a total replacement. So with that being said, again, we had an idea of what the shape of those roofs are. So in terms of philosophy is, if you can maintain that roof as long as you possibly can without totally rebuilding it, you can stretch your dollars farther. So with that being said, is now we then developed, for all of our campuses, and not including, you know, new construction or anything of that nature, because that's taken care of through the bond, of what areas of what campuses we need to focus on, so that way we can then make sure that we're protecting our assets with that as well. So it's, it's really detailed, and I think where it comes down to is putting that puzzle together of how much money's there in certain areas, and being able to make that all fit within the budgets that we have in a timely manner as well with that. Any questions on that?
6E, sorry, replacement plan.
And on this one, it was quite a task also, and Mr. Lasher can explain the committee.
Yes.
But he has provided information regarding the replacement plan scheduled to be completed and funds expended through the 25-26 school year, and our, again, $800,000 has been set aside in our replacement plan, and we kind of, we've been behind on both of these projects, so it has been completely revamped, and Mr. Lasher can explain that process.
Yes, so this is the original replacement plan that you've probably seen, going all the way back to Mr. Jones in that time, and what I will say with that is, having this has, has truly helped the district in terms of maintaining the various equipment, the vehicles, the fleets, the buses, and things of that nature, and being able to set aside, instead of all of a sudden it's broke and we need to fix it. So with that being said, the areas that we focus on with the replacement plan is auxiliary services, athletics, safety and security, technology, and fine arts. So with that being said, we brought all the department directors in, and they presented their, their replacement plan from the years past to the years going forward. So we've looked at five years past, tracking the history of expenses, and leading it five years into the future as well, so that way it gave us data on the long term, over the 10 years, of how much money was spent in each department in each year, and what that was targeted. So after they presented their replacement plans, then we went back, we were still over budget, I met with all of them individually, and I'm like, okay, here's the next round of cuts, what, what can you, what can you live with and without, you know, for the next year, next couple of years, and things of that nature? So we have, we have cut it, we were at one point about $1.7 million over, we've cut probably about 1.5 of that, so we're a little bit over, but we're still working on those plans, everyone has a voice. And then also, too, is if there's some things that we could do in terms of multiple departments, how, how we could utilize that as well, within those purchases as well. So with that being said, we have looked at each one closely, and obviously, if that need is there, and there's a history that something has gotten pushed off over the period of years, then we've, we've looked at that and put that on the plan as well. One thing that we did do is, we've taken the large capital improvement stuff that we've had on there, like replacement of just the turf or things like that, and put it back on the capital improvements, to help make that list manageable, because what the replacement plan truly is, is you put something on, you get rid of something. It's not adding to it, because obviously, we can't sustain it long-term with that being, because that list just grows and grows and grows. If there's things that we feel like that they can address in their budget, then we'll, we'll ask them to do that as well. And they've done a great job, as far as being receptive and open, and coming with great ideas and suggestions with that. Yes, yes, yes. So, for example, if we order a bus, we get rid of a bus. We don't just keep adding to that. So everything's unique, for example, uniforms, they, they get passed down from the varsity to the JV, down to the freshman, we don't cross over from the high school to the middle school, just because of the age-appropriate of that as well, but yes, we, we do that because, A, we don't have the space for it, and B, we don't have the money to sustain it, so.
One more other question, you mentioned safety and security as part of this, and I think, and I think we all understand, we don't ever want to compromise safety and security, just because maybe can't, it didn't make the cut, what they wanted on their budget didn't make the cut.
Right, right.
Is there anything that the police department, I guess, really, really wanted that they're not going to get?
No, we've always been proactive with that, and we've been able to get a lot of things through grants in the future, for, for example, like the ballistic shields and things of that. So I will say, Chief Provincio is always on the forefront, looking ahead, to make sure that we don't have those gotchas, and that we don't come into a situation where, you know, we have to take from another program, because we didn't plan accordingly.
Their own plan outside of being, just.
No, because I really think everything's covered within their budget themselves, so that obviously their, their normal operating budget as well, and then also with the safety plan, or the replacement plan that we have as well, I think is, will, 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 and has been suffice.
And I want to clarify, it's, a lot of it's technology, like cameras and the replacement, the lifespan of it, and to keep the technology going, and it coincides with the network. And so together, because we have to store so much of the camera footage on the central network, so I know Jacob and Sam have worked together on, you know, what year we need to replace and have more storage or new storage, and so I think they're tightly aligned now, and I feel that we will be able to cover the camera and the technology. A lot of the other, the other items that are very important, that you might have concerns about, are in their regular budget, okay?
You're welcome. 6D, discussion on policy updates for the, from the 89th Regular Legislative Session, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, Mr. Board President, at this time, Wes Jackson, our Director of School Policy and Student Support, he has, is wearing a new hat this year, and he certainly chose the perfect year for that, with all the legislation, legislation that came about in the last session. He will present our policy, some of our policy updates, and some of the choices, there's some decisions on several key items that we need the feedback, so we know how to move forward with TASB and developing the local policy. They already have some options made, but we need the input of exactly where we need to go, and then we also brought DeeDee and Ms. Colby here, so that if, if you're not, if you have questions about why we have some of the recommendations, they can certainly answer those, if Wes cannot answer that.
Thank you. President Tolliver, Ms. Smith Faulkner, Board members. We lost one, do we need to pause, or?
We'll take a minute.
Okay, okay. Recession, Mr. Jackson, go ahead, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. As Ms. Smith Faulkner said, there are quite a few changes from the 89th Legislative Session. Tonight, we're going to be talking about three. There's, there's basically three things that, that TASB sent us out a survey last week and said, we want to know what direction you want to move with these policies, because we really feel like these policies need to be in place before the beginning of the school year. So we're going to talk a little bit about library adoption, we're going to talk a bit about cell phones, and we're going to talk about homeschool students' participation in athletics. That's why we have the experts on library and athletics here, so that, so that they can field any questions that you have. So the Senate Bill 13 is, is all about library stuff, I'm going to stay in front of the mic, because you said that already, but it, it does several things. It, it expands parental rights, but it also increases some responsibilities within the district, but parents can restrict now access to what their kids are seeing. So we've got several things in place that you'll hear about as we kind of continue to, to walk through this presentation about how parents can do that. Lots of new little nuances, as far as like, we can't have indecent and profane things in books, things like that. So the School Board has new responsibilities. They have to now approve all books that will be purchased for school library collections. So book challenges have to come before the Board now, students cannot access books that are under review during a book challenge anymore, and the big thing that I'm going to talk with you guys tonight about is, do we want to appoint a local school library advisory council? So we'll talk a little bit about what that means, and what that would mean for us if we were to or to not make that decision. So our software that we use in the library is Destiny. Destiny is already capable of doing what we need it to do, to provide those parental controls, so parents can now log in and see everything that's going on with their kids, they can search for specific titles that they may have a concern about, and they can block their student from being able to check those titles out. So it's a very seamless process with Destiny. So, so we have that stuff in place. Potential downsides of the library council. So basically, what the library council would be, would be, the Board would appoint community members and parents to be members of this library council, who would have to look at every book before the Board was able to look at it and approve it, and move forward with it. So, you know, we've already added that layer of Board approved, or approval, which can slow down that process, and this could slow down that process even further. So those people would need extensive training to, to know what they're looking at, what, what do all these words, indecent and profane, mean, what, what do I have to know as a community member that's looking at these books? We have some administrative burden there, those meetings have to be posted in advance, they have to be open to the public. The committee is only required to meet twice a year, which would be very limiting, if we were to only bring those people in twice a year. However, if we were to bring this group of people in multiple times a year, then we're putting even more burden on these community members that have agreed to help us with this position. So it does potential burden on them, time, public scrutiny potentially, and just, just record-keeping, and adding all those layers to the process. And potentially, decisions might not line with the vision of our library program and with the vision of the Board, because we've now brought in some separate entities that haven't been a part of building that vision over the last several years. So the big thing, I think, was, would be the concern with slowing things down, and again, that, those issues potentially with, with the vision. Ms. Colby, do you want to add anything to that?
I think the biggest thing is that they need also know that leaving needs to be recorded, and those recordings need to be posted also, so whether, they need to post like, like a board meeting, seven, two hours in the van, then they need to be, they get to be reported, and then those recordings get to be posted.
So how our libraries are already compliant with some of these new laws, right? We already have that, as I said, in Destiny, where parents can see what's being checked out. Email notifications will be turned on, so each time I check out a book now, my mom will get a notification saying which book I've checked out. So if she's not proactive in looking at what I'm checking out, she's at least going to see it via that email as I'm checking it out real time in the library, and have, have a chance to intervene or to say something about that. We've got some, some Board policy, we already follow the selection criteria that are outlined in Board Policy. We have library services, book, book selection criteria, and our, our policy already basically says things have to be age-appropriate and not harmful material. So we're kind of covering that obscene and profane, hopefully, by saying age-appropriate and not harmful material. and not harmful material. So, this goes in effect right after September 1. One of the reasons we need to consider this one early is because it can potentially slow down processes that we may already have in place and book orders that we're already considering bringing to the board early on to, to go ahead and push through so that our, our kids and our teachers can have the things that they need early in the school year. So, we must have a library acquisitions policy, which sounds like we're in very good shape on that already. But, beginning September 1, the board must approve all new library materials. There has to be a 30-day public comment period, which is another place where it's already a slowdown process. So, you can see as we continue to add these layers that it could potentially complicate that process of getting those books into the hands of kids in a timely manner. We have to make that decision about an advisory council, whether we're going to move forward with that or not. And the board is going to vote on library materials in open meetings. They're going to have that, that final approval over that, with the exception of replacing old books that we have already had approved and things like that and, and duplicates of books that we've already approved in the past. So, this also includes donated books. If Scholastic donates the books after the book fair, those also have to be board approved before we can add those to the library. So, our, our recommendation after talking with Ms. Colby and considering the pros and cons of this would be to answer the survey question from TASB that we do not plan on establishing a school library advisory council. But again, we wanted to be proactive with bringing this information to you guys. We don't want to be bringing a policy to you for the very first time, saying we need to move on this policy very quickly before the beginning of the school year and you guys haven't had some chance to, to think about that and think about those pros and cons.
And, and I think, Mr. Board President, it'd be good, we have three of these, maybe what's fresh in your mind, to discuss it as.
Oh, yes, we do.
As Wes goes, if there's any questions on each one, because I don't want you to forget what we covered here. And I wanted to add to Wes that what the, what made me go with not recommending one is the fact that our parents, if our parents have the choice to block books and we can do it and our parents are going to receive an email when the child checks a book out and we have that ability in our software program. So, I think that takes care of why we don't recommend the advisory because now it's in the parents' decision on what their child is reading.
So, the program, you said Destiny?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we going to be, the board, or can we log into that ourselves to look at books or?
You have access on each of the library websites that you can go into the Destiny catalog for each campus. So, you already can go in as a guest and you can see all the materials that we have in the system. So, you can see what books. So, parents will be able to see that as well and they can go through and they can, Destiny itself with this access now, they will be able to go in and specifically say, "I don't want this book, this book, this book," and it will, it will be that specific. So, when that child brings that book up, we were testing it today, the sounds that it was going to make when you bring it up and they come to check it out and it's like, that's one my parent says no, it's, it will make a sound. So, if somebody's not standing there monitoring it 100%, they will hear that sound and they'll go, "Okay, what's wrong with that checkout?" It'll do it if the book's overdue. So, the kids aren't going to know, well, my parent, it, it, they, it says to the librarian, "Hey, take a look, there's something wrong." And so, the child can't proceed with the checkout until they resolve that issue.
And also, have we had any book challenges?
We have not. We have not had any challenges. And I think the one of the reasons to vote that we don't need a school library council is because in the new Senate Bill 13, this now goes, the challenges will go to the board and it, you will be the, the final say on what those challenges are. We've not, we've not had any in this district and I think having that turned on in Destiny where the parent can say, then I think that it, it gives the parent the choice to say, "This is good for my child, this is not good for my child." And it gives that individualized selection to the parent.
So, I have another question. So, the books that we have in the libraries now, have they been, I guess, would, would it word be audited?
We have gone through some of them, like in, in the, some of the software we have, you can see, well, this book is labeled adult and so we'll look at it. A lot of times what is labeled adult in our libraries are craft books. And so, if it says adult, we go and say, "Okay, why does it say adult? Why did," and then go through it. And so, we've been conducting that and each year as we go through it, we do, we have sections of the library that are set aside to be gone through, what we say weeded or deselected if that material's old, never been checked out, maybe the age appropriateness may have moved with updates to book reviews and that. And so, then we'll go through and we will deselect them or we'll move them to another campus if it was not appropriate anymore for elementary. Now, we can move it to middle school or high school. And so, that gives us that option. And, and that's one of the things we meant about today is how, you know, to continue this process so that in a few years from now, because everything will be by, approved by the board, it will say when it was approved by the board in our system. And so, we can say, "This book has been approved by the board, this book has been approved." So, we will know when that was approved and, and be able to track that as well.
Thank you.
So, does Destiny collect data on what books are being refused by parents? Or what parents are refusing?
If a librarian were to go in, they would be able to see because the, when you go in and a parent logs into it. Now, it was turned on last year. We had it open. If so, if any parent would have contacted us and say, "Hey, I want to limit what my," we could have said, "Hey, we, we have the system already in place, you can do it." But nobody's come to us, so we've not actually worked through the process because nobody came and said. I've, I've seen it demoed, the demonstrations of it and they can just, what they do is they pull up and log into the system and they just go through and they can just see all the books that are listed and they just put Xs by them. And then the librarian will, would be able to see that part of it so that if there were any questions, she could be able to go in and say, "Hey, that's not, this, your, this was blocked by your parent."
I mean, she's using, how could we as a board use that data if we're having to approve books? And, and I'm just thinking through, through this right now, but just wondering what kind of data collection that is and privacy and.
Well.
And how we can use that data.
Now, yeah, now that, once we turn it on and parents start getting it and seeing it, then we'll be able to determine what actual they hold on to.
And as far as a, a committee, I don't know how we could get a committee by September 1st anyway. So, I think that would be limiting doing that. And I, I would like to remind us, we're elected officials. We're elected to do these things and trusted and to approve or disapprove that on recommendations. So, I would be willing to agree that your recommendation to not do a council. But my question is, what about other parents? Do, would parents want to be part of a council?
In Senate Bill 13, if you have 50% or 50 parents petition, then we must put it into place.
Okay, okay.
And so, that we have to have 50 parents or a minimum of 10%, whichever is fewer, 10% of the students, number of students, so.
So, how are we getting that information, sorry Kathy, to parents? Is that what you're going to ask?
That's why we needed to discuss it now because we have to put all these procedures in place and in the student.
Code of conduct.
Code of conduct before school starts. Well, teachers come back on July 30th and we usually begin going over all the new guidelines. So, that's the importance of, of this and then requesting a special meeting because then Mr. Jackson has to take this information and there's lots of places now we have to, you know, place that. And not only that, we have to put procedures in place for exactly that, the communication. We talked to, with Abby about how do we put this out on our social media in a timeline so our parents aren't overwhelmed with all of the things we're about to ask that we're going to have to communicate.
And the one thing with this, if at any point a, a group of parents put it together and they've read it and they say, "Okay," then they could come forward with that petition. They don't, we don't have to do that.
And we can always change the board policy. If, if something happens and we're not comfortable, then you guys can always go back and amend your policy.
And we can also handle things in a not-quite-formal way. If parents want to give us, if they have advice for librarians or what they want in the library, we can always meet together in a more informal manner and be able to take their input and say, "Okay, bring us your recommendations." We do have a feedback form on our website already if parents have feedback that they want to give, like if they want to recommend books that we have in our library, they can go ahead and do that. And we can monitor, we monitor that website.
So, I'm going to go back to Tracy. So, you're thinking that we shouldn't be on the advisory council?
So, the decision is either we have an advisory council, which is a separate group other than the board that would approve books and then the board would approve them, or we can skip the advisory council and then the board makes the approval. So, the, the, it's already in place for the board to have to approve it. So, you, you guys do have that oversight already.
And again, we, we must ensure that our parents are notified. And I think that, how many parents become interested if they, if we're notified could trigger a change, you know, that we could do later. And so, I, I like the fact that our parents are going to be involved and have their input.
So, the next topic is Senate Bill 401. And this has to do with homeschool students being able to participate in UIL activities. So, this legislation basically says that districts are required to allow homeschool students to participate in UIL activities unless we adopt a policy opting out of that requirement. So, and so, the other piece of that that we have to consider is what all the districts around us are doing because if, if districts around us opt out and we do not, students from the districts, they can go to the nearest district that allows homeschool participation in UIL events. So, that, that's something to consider and something that I'll talk about kind of as we go through here. So, again, to get a little bit more into the details, they must be within our attendance zone unless their district has opted out, then they can go to the next closest district. They do have to do some things to make sure they're not just hopping from school to school. They have to submit a previous athletic participation form. It has to be approved by the district executive committee for varsity competition. I assume that's similar to what kids do when they move around and things like that, DeeDee. And then, here, here's where it gets a little bit more vague right now, is students must submit scores of a standardized test of grade level proficiency and parents have to submit grades for the students every nine weeks for us to consider for eligibility. So, some things to consider. We would not receive funding for these students. Some areas where we would incur extra cost would be insurance for injuries, equipment use and wear and tear, and then meals. As you guys know, we feed kids when we travel and things like that. Some other concerns would be academic proficiency. What exactly is a grade level standardized test and how is that defined? And, you know, that, again, we've got parents sending us grades to determine, you know, pass, no play. We do not have star exams. These kids that are homeschooled are not held accountable to that standard. And so, they don't have to do that. They don't have to, they don't have to achieve at the same rigorous standards that our students have to achieve at. It could keep our own students from being able to participate in activities if we have a high level of homeschool participation. We don't, so the kids, when they're here for athletics, would participate in the athletic period as well. So, we have very little teeth in being able to hold them to our code of conduct, to make a DAP placement, to do anything disciplinary when they are homeschooled, right? We, we could do something for that one period, but if they're homeschooled, you can't really put them in ISS because it's, you know, a matter of what, whether that's going to happen at home or not, right? So, other things to consider, certain programs like band, those start in seventh grade. We start our kids in seventh grade on track to be successful in band when they get in high school. This would result potentially in more kids coming in kind of in the middle of a program and not having those kind of preliminary skills that we would want them to have to be successful and to achieve to the standards that, that we want our kids to achieve here in Castleberry in those programs. I've already talked about the last one. And, and I will share with you guys that both Ms. Pierce and Ms. Smith-Fauntner have been reaching out to other districts. The majority of the local districts that they've heard back from are planning to opt out of allowing homeschool participation, which is something to consider if we know all those people around us are planning to opt out. It does impact our decisions somewhat. I think some districts have even gone ahead and adopted it into board policy already. And the same with, with Ms. Pierce, so she's reached out to other coaches in other districts that I think one district is all we've heard back from that is planning on kind of opting into allowing the homeschool students to participate. So, our, our recommendation moving forward with policy with that would be to opt out at this point until we know more about what this is going to look like. What are those nine weeks' grades going to look like from parents? What is that standardized test going to look like? What, are, is UIL going to put some more things in place moving forward in the future where this is a more fair and equitable process? That is unclear at this point. I, I think that's, as anything with this new legislation, we don't have all the details. Oh, no, we cannot, never mind.
You cannot hold them for anything more accountable than what our current students are held accountable for. So, if band charges a fee, yes, you could charge them. If athletics does not, then you could not charge that student because that's what we do. No.
So, what is the thinking behind this? Why are, why is this, why was this bill passed?
Charter schools. It's, it's all tied to parent choice and they want those students to have the same opportunities as public schools.
And I, and I always hate, I always hate to say I play the devil's advocate because he's got enough of those already, but homeschool kids' parents do pay taxes and so I'm sure that maybe that's their argument, that they should be able to participate, is that.
But they might not pay our school taxes.
That's right, because they can come.
Because they come, so if all the camp districts around us are not participating.
We can have influx.
Yes, ma'am.
And now we can add some.
And if you think about how small we are, that could have a really big impact on us if some of those bigger, those Fort Worth ISD students, you know, were to come knocking on our door.
I think I would be more inclined to saying, "Sure, let them come," if it was just our community. But it's so broad that it's almost, almost unmanageable.
Well, and it's one of those things as we get, they, they develop more rules and things like that and we get more guidelines that maybe it does become more limited, but right now, that's, that's the danger and it seems like.
I just don't think it would be fair, like he said, to our students and then all the, you know, if there's an injury or there's something that happens like that and we don't have no kind of, we can't even contact anybody or pay for it, then we'd probably be under a lawsuit.
And one of the other big concerns is, is, that's a great point, the supervision of students. When kids are only here for one period a day, you start to see more issues with those parents arriving to drop them off and pick them up on time and, and those types of things.
So, as we go through this, are you needing a consensus tonight or will we be voting on this at the next meeting?
So, you'll, you'll vote at the special board meeting that I'm going to propose, but it sounds like we're getting the direction of what to bring you based on your feedback. So, thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, I know you've said that before.
And the last one, the one with the least slides, but probably the most controversial one. School districts and charters must adopt a policy prohibiting the use of cell phones while on school property during the school day. This includes smartwatches, earbuds and other devices capable. This includes smartwatches, earbuds, and other devices capable of communication. So basically, we have two options here. One is we can tell kids, you may not bring phones to school, period. Or we can tell them that you may take your phone out after school and use it for those things you need to do after school, to reach out to your parents, to come pick you up, and to do those types of things. But this does away with phones being out during lunch, during passing period, during all of those times. So the, the most restrictive option is saying, do not bring it to school, period. You will not be allowed in with it. The option that we're recommending is the less restrictive option that we would like to start with, which is you can bring it to school, but it has to be put away all day. We cannot see it. There will be consequences if we see it. It is a state law. So we're, I mean, it's, this is the one that, that really we need to have the policy in place before the beginning of the school year, right? Because we're going to have parents and kids challenge us on this right away. So, so this is the one that's really driving us, us considering having a special meeting is, is this. Because we need to plan for this not only in the cellphone policy, but the student code of conduct needs to be written in such a way that we have, we have steps in there of, of what's going to happen after repeated cellphone violations and, and those types of things.
That's the current practice right now, basically, isn't it? That you don't want them to have it out during the day.
So it, it depends kind of by grade level. At elementary, that's very much the case. We don't see the cell phones very much during the school day. As you get into middle school, maybe the students are allowed to use them at lunch, especially on a reward basis. You guys have done good with, with dress code this week, maybe you're, you can take your phones out during the lunch period. At high school, we see them more in the cafeteria. We do see them in passing periods. And, and as you would imagine, we have a little bit bigger problem with, with having to remind the students to put them away during class at the high school as well. So that's where we'll see the biggest adjustment. I think our middle school students are probably accustomed to checking them in such a way that we don't notice, you know? So, you know, what we would say is something like, that has to be put away in your bag all day. If we see it, then we will address it with you. If we don't see it, it won't be addressed.
And turned off.
And turned off, yes.
So what, what kind of storage would you provide for the students?
So I, so if we were to look at, remember, we talked about the pouches a couple of years ago? Those were at that time $15,000 for a campus. I reached out just out of curiosity. They're now $30,000 for a campus. So it would cost $60,000 to provide that at the middle school and the high school. They're saying storage can be defined as, we're saying, you already have a backpack, you already have a laptop bag, your phone should be in there.
And how about, because parents are going to ask emergencies. If there's an emergency...
That is the last time kids should have their phone out, is during an emergency. They should be listening and compliant and being quiet. Extra phones, making phone calls during an emergency interferes with emergency services being able to be reached and all of those types of things. We're going to be very proactive about our communication around, if there is an emergency, here's how you will hear from us as a school district. But the phone is supposed to be off. And it's, I mean, the, the, the short, unfriendly answer is, I'm sorry, it's the law that the phone has to be put away and off. You cannot reach your kids during the school day. That's an issue to take up with your legislature.
So, yeah. So one more question on if the phone is confiscated. Are, is there, I know a long time ago, there used to be some kind of charge, like, okay, you're going to have to get, pay 15 bucks to get it or something.
I've, I've been visiting with our principals and assistant principals over the last couple of weeks about this. So we moved away from the fee here, I think it was three years ago when I first got here. It's a lot to keep up with money and have to follow all the rules and regulations that have to do with taking in and, and moving money, and it's honestly just not worth the fight. There will be some points in, in our consequences where the parent has to come pick it up from the school. We're not just going to give it back to the kid at the end of the day. But so far, that discussion has kind of stayed away of going back to the charging and those types of things.
And in addition, we, we want them to be able to bring them to school, turn them off, because we know there are times at the end of the day that they might need a ride and they can text their parent. However, if we cannot, if our students cannot follow the guidelines, then we'll come back with a new recommendation that they're not, they cannot bring them to school to change policy. So we want to do the least restrictive that the law says. And then if that's not working, if our APs, our principals are constantly dealing with students fight, you know, arguing and not wanting to go by the guidelines, or, you know, even if we have some parents upset then, constantly, then we will come back and do the recommendation for the more restrictive option that we have. But we'd like to start with the least restrictive, which is phones put away, phones off, all day long.
And what, we, our kids use their phones during the work, did we just talk about that? Did we never do that?
We have, every child has a laptop, and the laptop is the tool that they use for Canvas and everything. So we have not used phones in a very long time. Yeah. Maybe pre-COVID.
And it actually extends beyond and says they can't have any personal devices. So it's not even just phones. It's, you can't bring your own laptop, you can't bring your own iPad, you're going to use the school-issued equipment.
And not that it matters, not that it matters because it's the law, we have to abide by this, but are we happy that our kids are going to be less, least distracted? Or do we think that they're smarter than we are and they're going to figure out?
I think it's going to come with its own set of challenges.
Good answer.
We want our policy in place that will go into effect first day. I, I think it actually falls closer to September 1. It's, this one has a little bit weird, different timeline, but we want the policy in place because we want to uphold the, the rule before school starts, because we don't want that confusion with parents or students and, and our practice not matching policy.
You know, this is such a lifestyle change now for us. I mean, and I won't tell you how I've gotten in trouble when my child had their first phone. But, so will we have a grace period?
We'll have a warning that's, put your phone away, and then you will begin to follow the consequences of having not put your phone away.
And we have seen other districts who have already adopted their local policy, and they're pretty strict.
Yeah.
And we'll probably be using some of their guidelines.
Yeah. Richardson ISD is one of the first districts that used the yonder pouches, but they don't use them at every campus, but they have a no-phone policy at their other campuses. So we're looking at that policy as kind of a guide as far as somebody that's been doing this for a few years and kind of knows what works and knows where they're not biting off too big of a fight as far as the consequence goes and those kind of things.
So just a curiosity question. Will we be collecting, I hate to say collecting data because it's so scary, but that this is actually going to be beneficial in student achievement? Are we going to, how are we going to measure that this is working?
I think if you, all you have is before and after, the, the time before House Bill 1481 and the time after House Bill 1481.
And just teacher reports and saying how much better...
I mean, if you ask Richardson ISD and you ask the company that sells the pouches, they will tell you that, that it is effective and that it does improve scores, but... The other piece is the last slide, and this is just kind of for your information. We've already been working with Abby, as Ms. Smith-Faulkner said, to develop some communication. In fact, we would like to start sending out communication this week. Again, that's part of the reason we wanted to put this in front of you before we started communicating with parents, communicating with TASPI about the direction we were going. But you can see that AZL ISD's put something out. I think the other one is Cushing ISD. I think one of the things I really liked about the letter from Cushing is they say, this is the law, we're, we're going with the least restrictive version of the law. That's kind of the best we can do for you guys. But it very clearly lays out that the other option would be to just say you can't bring it at all. So I think that's good messaging on our part, and I, I think we need to start putting this out as early as, as next week. And then as we add those policies and we have those specifics about consequences, we can put that out as well.
Other ways to contact our child during the day. So if a parent did want to contact their child, those guidelines are still in place in the...
Yes.
In the guidebook.
And I, I mean, a lot of kids email their parents from their school computer.
Do, are you talking about by phone, by their cellphone?
Yeah, they just needed to contact.
No, they call the office and get a message or email the teacher.
Yeah, and we still have office aides that can run information to them. Yeah.
Yes. And there's obviously concessions for students that have a medical need, such as their monitoring their blood sugar via their phone, those kind of things. Those, those exceptions are in place. Thank you all.
Item seven, at this time, the board will retire to closed session under Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 through 551.076, and 551.08 through 551.083, to discuss the items listed on the agenda. The time is 8:01 PM. to discuss the items listed on the agenda. The time is 8:01 PM.
...
Our recess, it is eight fifty P. M. As we continue tonight's meeting, we welcome all those who have joined us. As we keep asking how we can best promote and encourage achievement for every student in our district, the mission of Castleberry Independent School District is inspiring and empowering all students to be innovative thinkers in the global community. At this time, we will begin with a pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the rightful authorities of this land, one nation under God, indivisible, with every due and justice for all. On my honor as Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Do we need eight C here? We're on item eight C, professional employee on the organizational chart.
Yes, Ms. Catherine Walker has an introduction of Jennifer Garcia, our recent hire.
Good evening, School Board President Tolliver, Superintendent Smith Faulkner, and School Board members. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce our new secondary English language arts coordinator, Dr. Jennifer Garcia. Dr. Garcia joins Castleberry ISD from the Education Service Center Region Eleven, where she served as the Secondary Texas Reading Initiative Literacy Instructional Coach for the past three years. Dr. Garcia holds a Master of Education in Curriculum and Instruction with a focus on triple literacy from the University of Texas of Arlington and a Doctor of Education in Organizational Leadership from National University. Her doctoral research explored how professional development and mentorship impact early-career teachers' self-efficacy. She holds multiple kindergarten through twelfth-grade teaching certifications, including reading specialist and master reading teacher certifications, and is currently pursuing her principal certification, which she anticipates completing in two thousand twenty-five. Dr. Garcia began her career in education thirteen years ago as a classroom teacher in Dallas Independent School District. She continued as a classroom teacher in Arlington ISD, where she taught for three years before serving an additional three years as curriculum and instructional specialist. In that role, she supported more than one hundred and seventy secondary ELAR teachers through curriculum development, assessment design, professional development, and PLC facilitation. She then expanded her impact at the service center, where she provided coaching and professional learning on best practices in literacy instruction to districts across the region. Since two thousand twenty-two, she has partnered with the Texas Education Agency to co-develop and deliver a top-rated summer literacy conference, and she recently presented her work to the U. S. Department of Education. Dr. Garcia brings a wealth of knowledge and a passion for serving all educational stakeholders. She looks forward to contributing meaningfully to the district and the community. Now, outside of work, Dr. Garcia enjoys reading, hiking, and writing. She is the proud mother of two amazing daughters, Maven and Madeline, who are both beginning their college journeys this fall. Dr. Garcia believes that educators have both the incredible opportunity and great responsibility to shape the future through their work with students, teachers, and the broader community. She is honored to begin this new chapter and is excited to serve Castleberry ISD and its Board of Education. And now I'm going to let her say a few words.
Good evening, President, Superintendent, and the Board. I just want to thank you for bringing me on board. I look forward to the work ahead of us. I have had the opportunity to work with the middle school ELAR teachers over the last two years as that instructional coach from the region center. So very familiar with the system and the teachers, and everybody's wonderful, and I'm just really looking forward to jumping into the work. Thank you.
Welcome, Dr. Garcia.
All right, Dr. Garcia, did you bring any family or friends with you this evening?
I did. Can you please stand up? My father, Robert Garcia, who you're probably familiar with, here, and then my sister Cynthia Garcia, and both of these two have been integral in helping me navigate education in general and just being, you know, my support system. So I'm appreciative of them.
Congratulations once again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Item nine, consent agenda. At this time, we will consider the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Please indicate your vote. Motion carries four zero. Now on to item ten A, consider approval of the amended two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six compensation plan. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move for approval of the amended two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six compensation plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
For everyone that is not on the teacher, yeah.
Any further discussion? Please indicate your vote. Motion carries four zero. Item ten B, consider approval of budget amendment. This is budget amendment one. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please indicate your vote. Motion carries four zero. Now on to information items. Superintendent approved professional new hires. Do you want to get into that? Presentation. District improvement plan, someone to review. Didn't have any question.
Mr. Board President, I do not have any questions on information items.
Okay. Go to item twelve, discussion items of the board. Yes, ma'am. Sure. Which one? Some. Okay. Do credit. Which item is that?
It's not on there. I can't add it on there, but about personal finance classes.
Sure.
And if you do submit the question, I can probably put it in the board update if it's appropriate, okay?
On to item twelve, discussion items, twelve A, board key dates. And I did get a note from Ms. Carol about the meet the teacher. She will be at Irma Marsh with her niece. And that's August the ninth.
Yes, sir. I also wanted to go back to July because convocation is Wednesday, July thirtieth. And so that'll be at Irma Marsh in the morning. And so I wanted to be sure that you were aware of that. At eight thirty, we'll do the breakfast in the morning, and then convocation will start at eight thirty. In addition, the pep rally will be on August fourth in the afternoon. So I know those are two big events that we usually have all of our board members attend. We are going to later make a recommendation to change that date because since our calendar was changed with the additional day school years, then we were going, I'm going to recommend that we move the school board meeting to the eighteenth.
July the eighth. August the eighth. I'm sorry.
I know, because it's already the end of the year.
Yeah. Okay.
The new teacher luncheons, would it be the one on the Tuesday that you recommend?
Actually, if you want to come to either new teacher breakfast or luncheon, we have the Charlie Guerin luncheon on the twenty-ninth. I think that you all like to attend that one on Tuesday. And then we also, if your schedule is better to attend the breakfast, just let me know. On the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, we have the breakfast and the luncheon.
Thank you.
But Mr. Guerin, Charlie Guerin's luncheon is on the twenty-ninth, and I know that's when a lot of you like to attend that one. The Education Foundation will be doing breakfast, I believe, on the twenty-eighth. One of the days, yeah, the twenty-eighth. They're doing lunch, not breakfast. Okay, lunch, okay. That will be my recommendation, to change it to the eighteenth because having on the first day of school is going to be very difficult with new teachers. So the recommendation for y'all to look at your calendars and move it to the eighteenth, and then might as well move to July twenty-fourth on Thursday, either early that morning or that night, scheduling a special session so that we can go ahead and make them, take our recommendations to you that we presented tonight, and go ahead and adopt those so that we will be prepared for the information to go out to our students, our parents, and our, like our grading guidelines. There's a lot of work that we have to do in Skyward.
So what is this for you, for estimate in the morning or anything?
Either way, it can be seven in the morning, if you would like, or it can be that night. It's whatever your schedules will work. I can work around whatever.
Whatever, either way.
Seven fifteen in the morning?
Yes.
Does that work?
If there's copies.
Okay, we'll have copies. So seven fifteen, July twenty-fourth, Angela, if you'll go ahead and mark that. And then we'll go ahead and send the information out to move to August eighteenth for the August date since they passed the additional day school year calendar. The items that morning, we have board policy, replacement plan, in case there's a compensation plan update, and the grading guidelines. So those are all, they'll be quick action items.
Anything else on there? Competition yet? Yeah, August eighth, line eight. I'll be there.
I'll have Angela send out a formal form so we can put your name on the dates. Do a Google sheet, and then we can put the events and who can come, okay, Angela?
Take care of twelve B. And we're on to twelve C, discussion of creating a school board self-evaluation tool, which Ms. Galman has done extensive research on. And if you will remind us exactly what we talked about. Well, you have a person in mind, which I'm all for.
Okay, so you just want me to start with the regional level?
Sure, yeah.
And if you'll recall, Mary Lou talked about having committees, and so the committees met and thought, well, meet with the board and tailor-make a board evaluation. And I'm going to get my notes real quick, real quick. So the evaluation framework is, an evaluation framework typically assesses the board's performance. So it's about us making sure we are doing our job. And, you know, lots of times we talk about, our job is not to do the superintendent's job. So what is our job? And this will help us, I think, with this framework, evaluate our own performance, and which is student achievement, number one. Number two, governance, evaluating board processes, policies, and decision-making. Should I continue? There's five.
No, there was a person, there was a person you had in mind.
Yes, and so I contacted her, I emailed her, and asked her just some processes, and she could come talk to us.
What was her name?
Carrie, 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 Carrie. She called, she called me. Yeah, and so she emailed me back and saying that she's been in contact with the superintendent and that you were going to be meeting and discussing that, and so I kind of looked into that until I got to talk to you.
Yes, and so we have gone through some of the effective school framework training at the administrative level. That's what our improvement plans are based on. So when you see the campus improvement plans, the effective school framework is, it's based on that. So it will feed in, since it's based on effective school framework, it will feed into Lone Star Governance really well. What I was going to suggest to her was that we get our A through F accountability ratings in August. We're going to get twenty-four also, which is great. That's two sets of years. And what I was going to request was a team of eight, training on our existing goals and where we landed, and where our focus is. And then let her come in and kind of help us after you guys all kind of know our improvement plan goals, our House Bill Three goals, our strategic plan goals, and what we've done over the retreat, because I think you're going to like how we narrowed down some of our goals during the retreat. Our principals just finished a two-day training and activities on that. And so I would like to bring it all together and then bring, bring someone in from Region Eleven and kind of tie it all together.
Carrie Carter, I think it should be.
Carrie, I know Carrie, but I'm not, I don't, I forgot her last name. Is it Carter? Okay, Angela said Carter.
Yeah.
Because Angela's been working with this. And so that way, it's kind of like, here's the results. Here's where we are. Here's our performance objective goals. And just kind of, just tying it all together because it all comes together.
And what I personally like as a board member about Lone Star Governance is, I just lost my train of thought. And what I liked about Lone Star Governance is it's an ongoing progress monitoring of ourselves. It's probably been on now. And what I liked about Lone Star Governance is we're, it's an ongoing progress monitoring of ourselves on how we are governing. And so that's what I like. And I talked to her before, and she said it is, there is a cost, obviously, to it, that there are, there's possibly a grant that we can apply for that will cover the cost. And so she was going to look into that as well. And I don't know if she's communicated that with you or not. But, because you haven't met yet. When are you, when are y'all meeting?
I was hoping to meet before school started. What's the date? And they're very familiar. What's great is Region Eleven is very familiar because the, you see the observation feedback, all of the levers that we're putting in place comes all from, from effective school framework. And that, and Dr. Richland has been working with.
So, I mean, I know, are you okay with meeting with her to basically doing what is maybe our job to do?
Oh, no, no, absolutely. Because what I'm going to do is show her and talk about where we are. I mean, she's already familiar with us, and I think that we'll kind of put together a plan of how, of what we could do to roll this out.
And if you go to Lone Star Governance, if you go to the link that I provided before, it, there's a lot of information there that I think that you would really benefit from reading. And, you know, the framework is about effective governance, and I think that we've all agreed to that we want to be effective.
So I think that, Mr. Hutchings, do you know the date of when A through F accountability will be released? Will it be before the August eighteenth board meeting? Yep. So I think that it depends on the exact date that will be released, and then we will share the official score. We've already given you our preliminary scores through Mr. Hutchings' presentation in May. And so what we'll do is now we'll be able to present the final scores and then our performance objectives that we made on the preliminary scores. And so I think we can present all of that, and it would fall in nicely with our process at that time.
Because, keep in mind, it's about evaluating our effectiveness, not necessarily what we're monitoring. We're monitoring ourselves. So, but I, but yes, I think it will work together greatly. But I agree, we have three board members not here that are, would need that input. But, and my whole August is up and air right now, so I'll probably be gone most of August. But let me know dates, and I see what I can do. Thank you. And this would, it would fill any, all legal requirements of what our requirements are.
Do you think we need to touch on the budget dashboard or progress monitor? Next meeting is Monday, August eleventh? Eighteenth, I'm sorry. I didn't, I need to write that down. Next meeting is Monday, August eighteenth.
No, our next meeting is July twenty-fourth.
Oh, yeah, that's right. You're right.
But it's a special one, so it doesn't count.
For regular.
It's getting late. And I really don't have to have coffee. I'll have coffee way before then, so no pressure.
I move we adjourn. Hearing no objection, we stand adjourned at nine fifteen P M.
Good work. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Oh, were you going to tell us what this is?
That is from our retreat, and it goes with the book that you.